To kind of go over some of the background or mechanics of different items. Maybe avoid the pro versus con discussions, but if there's anybody who needs in history or background, you know, on some of these. You have to do so, you know, for instance, the contingency transfer at our next meeting. You know, maybe a good opportunity to cover up the Oregon blood law to settle things. So anyway. So we have a proposal from Destination Management Advisors. Nice specifically asked them to provide us a proposal for project management for the Sammery Trail, specifically because of John Paul, who's their, who's their principal. He has a pretty extensive and specialized experience and knowledge. So he'd be a pretty good fit. He's worked with ODOT, he's worked with the Fort Smith and the Bay, he's worked with Oregon Coast City Railroad, Sammery Trail, and also Cedar Rockaway Beach. John Paul is the, he was the lead author on the community task that got us to this point. So he's well, he's, he's very familiar with Sammery Project and from Rockaway and all the various players that are involved here. And let's see, so as far as why you need a project manager, you know, Sammery is going to be a multi-year, multimillion dollar project. There's going to be a lot of big agencies, a lot of big firms doing some of the work, you know, just the, just a 30% design that, that ODOT is going to do for us through their consultant, you know, that's a $750,000 project alone. Construction is going to be much more than that. So to keep all those, everything moving, to make sure that we know what our citizens want, we make, we make sure that Rockaway's desires are, you know, stay on top. Throughout the project, it's, in my opinion, it's worth the, the resource, spending the resources to make sure that can happen. A project manager like John Paul, you know, really is, in my opinion, kind of the best way to go about it, or at least have a first look as far as project management goes for, for the Sammery. And at that point, I was going to see if John Paul's with us. Not yet, okay. Let me, I'll shoot him a text and make sure he's not, oh, yep, he's called, let me see.
I think he did the Spring Water Trail as well, do you know? Because we want to do one of these meetings, right?
Yeah, no, he wasn't working with the Sammery, oh, yeah, the Spring Water Trail, yeah. I'm not sure about that. He joined the Sammery for project. Only just before.
Oh, okay. I thought he was part of the, is that Brown's story, is that right? Remember the, the beginning meetings on the?
Brown's.
Brown's.
Is there anybody joining us?
Yeah, I have two.
Okay. Wait until you're getting up.
I think he's, he's got a lot of, I'm supposed to do. Seems to be telling a lot of people.
Yeah.
Just minor stuff.
Yeah, it's a good part.
Yeah, but yeah, it was a good job too. I think it's good to have something, I don't know, I think it's more.
So I've got a lot of. And we're always. Yes. It's a chain of command going after somebody that will oversee it.
Yes, and I think that's, from what I'm reading, that's exactly what I'm supposed to do. Lots of meetings and.
Well, while we're waiting for them, is there any? Sorry, is there any comments or to what you've heard so far while we wait for him to get on?
Are we going to go over the entire thing or just make comments on it?
Um, I was going to let John Paul walk you all through his proposal, introduce himself, and then open it up.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's, we'll end up with whatever you all think you need.
I'd like to ask a question before that has just to do with our financing. Is the, the cost or the financing for the project, will that come out of the grant project funding or is, where does that funding come from?
Yeah, so we've got about a 10% match on the $750,000. So that's a TRT, already been paid. But the, the 750 will be grant money, $750,000 through highway funds administered by ODOT. So we won't even spend the money, it'll, it'll come out of ODOT's own pocket.
But what about for the John Paul's contract?
Oh, I'm sorry, that, that'll be funded by the city.
And as well.
What he has to do. It's not that much money. It's actually about five to ten.
We can talk about cutting that down.
Okay.
Luke, is it a fixed bid contract or a time and materials?
Whatever is the proposal, yeah.
It doesn't specifically, I mean, it has a.
Not to exceed those amounts.
So it's a fixed bid, you, you're going to do all of this for, for $68,000?
Yep, with $12,000.
$1,200 in reimbursement.
$1,200 reimbursement.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure it was a fixed bid contract.
I'd gladly touch that for TNN because that could get out of control.
Yes, exactly. Well, technology does what technology does.
I'm, I'm sure it's my fault, in some way I'm sure.
Just blame it on the new mayor.
Well, it's reimbursed, it's just the funds down here.
Can we discuss anything else in the end?
Oh, I don't know.
We've been, we've been. I think they're, I think they're, I think they're there.
Well, I have another question about this while we're waiting. Will he be coming during this time period, the six months when he's looking on this? Will he be coming each month to city council to give us an update on things? So I, I know you'll be giving us updates, but I mean, will we hear from him in addition or just not?
I don't, I don't think that's written into the plan anywhere.
Okay.
Those, those are the kinds of items you all can bring up and say, you know, hey, we want to see you once a month or every quarter, whatever, whatever it is.
Well, there are benchmarks and timelines with the bottom of the score with months.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, John Paul, can you hear us?
Yes, hello.
All right, we're turning volume up, can, can you hear us? Can, can we hear you? Can you say hi?
Let's see, can you guys hear me? I'm, I'm John Paul, Destination Management Advisors, and appreciate some tech support getting on. Sorry to be a few minutes late. Glad to be here.
So John Paul, I just gave a, a short introduction for you and kind of explained the need for a project manager on this, this project. And I was hoping you could kind of introduce yourself and then go through, walk through the proposal with the council.
Yes, of course, I'm happy to. Again, my name's John Paul, I've been running my firm Destination Management Advisors for about a decade. And part of that time is Smithland Park was working on this project, the Sammery Trail, with a lot of those stakeholders and closely with Luke and the city on the initial proposal for the planning funds. And so the proposal that I've sent is to help shepherd that process along with some high level goals of getting that funding through from ODOT, making sure that community engagement and outreach is central to the planning process, paired with the technical inputs from ODOT and other agency stakeholders, the city, of course, aligned with planning work that you guys have done. And getting through in time, I think there is some urgency around having that work in motion so that if, if, if the city chooses to, construction funding could follow in then, in the not-too-distant future while those infrastructure funds are available. Um, I'd be happy to take any, any questions or if you guys would like, just do a, a high-level walkthrough of the, the scope that I submitted.
I, I would like that, yeah. Yes, thank you, the, the high-level walk.
Great. I'll, I'll do that now. All right, so the, obviously the, the components that we have here are helping set up project management. Obviously, these, these projects are quite complex and involve input from a lot of different stakeholders, particularly with this Community Pass funding. ODOT is, is central to it in terms of both planning and, and providing technical support. So the idea is that we have a, a tight project management framework, put together a team that will be playing distinct roles during the refinement stage and coordinating inputs in a way that gets us to the deliverable that, excuse me, not only the city needs, but ODOT needs as well. And that has a lot of buy-in and input from, from the community. So the first part is fairly straightforward, putting together a good process to convene a fairly complex process with a lot of different stakeholders from different agencies who have quite a few demands on their time. So just making this as efficient and timely as possible. The, the second portion here under community engagement, the idea in, in broad strokes is, is that this would start with conversations with all of you and others in the city that will help orient who all should be involved, what channels that are existing in the community we can use, and, and getting the messaging out. So putting together a strong communications and outreach plan that is city-led. We would create content for the city's social media and website and then take recommendations from that first round of, of interviews and conversations on what our groups and individuals should be involved, what works best for the community in terms of a blend of outreach on social media, Headlight Herald, city website, public gatherings, one-on-one meetings, making sure that it's a good fit for community members and it is an efficient process for, for folks to be involved. There's an element here of intertwining the technical inputs that ODOT and others will provide. There are obviously some physical and engineering constraints for the project. So I think it would make sense to set, set it, set the parameters in place in terms of the alignment and, and broad strokes planning, get that first level of, of community input and buy-in, communicate about the project, make sure that we have categorized the high-level input we've received on, on what priorities are from the community perspective. Take that back into the technical side of the planning process, see, see what the best blend of, of design possibilities is that are both feasible, fundable, and responsive, most importantly, to community input. And then having another round of, of more targeted community outreach on specific design elements as, as the design or refinement process unfolds. So, for example, obviously, you know, parking implications are an important issue here. So having very specific conversations around what will work best for local businesses, what the opportunities are, and then other elements as well. I think having good, good communication with, with the schools and leadership there and with students and student groups and parents about some parameters of, of this trail leading to and from school safely, making sure those specific design elements are incorporated. So we'll know, we'll know at that point in the project more nuance and detail around specific design elements that need closer look and consideration from the community, from you all selected officials and, and different groups as well. And we'll also make an effort to reach out to, to, to folks who might not use technology as much as others, who might not be as reachable through traditional channels, whether those folks, for whatever reason that may be. So just making an intentional effort to get input from people whose voices might not be part of the more traditional process and channels. From there, the third element of stakeholder engagement is, is acknowledging that there are partners who are not necessarily going to be on the core planning team for this project, but whose engagement is important for a couple of reasons. You know, one, how this fits into the broader scope of planning and infrastructure in, in the county and on the North Coast, but also tending to these relationships that honestly will have some saliency when it comes to construction funding. So part of what this proposal intends to do is leave the city in a very good place to be competitive for construction funding, once the design is approved, and managing the relationships that will help those doors be open to that, that significant funding. The urgency there, of course, is that the ODOT funding from the recent federal packages will be spent down by 2024. So there is, I think, a, a good opportunity here to manage relationships and process in a way that, should the city choose, would make, make you very competitive for construction funding in the next couple of years before those budgets are back to normal levels and much more competitive. And that's, that's an overview in, in broad strokes here. The process, of course, would be to refine this, build out a work plan, take any input and feedback you all have to create a more specific scope of work and project implementation plan. And it would be a privilege, of course, to work with you all and the city on this. Be happy to take any questions or comments you have.
Thank you, John Paul. I'm Mary McGinnis, I'm one of the city councilors, and we met a few times when you were with the Sammery Trail Foundation and I was advocating for Rockaway along with Janet McIntyre. And I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that you've put into this proposal. And I'm particularly impressed with the amount of community engagement. That's one of the things that our community expects. And, and, but I do have a, a question when you, when you mentioned one-on-one. What, what do you envision as one-on-one with, with community engagement?
That would be the, the initial step, you know, right after starting the engagement, it would be to sit down and have one-on-one conversations with, with all of you, ideally, with, with, with Luke, of course, and, and other folks in the city office. Because, you know, there are, I would love, I think, having that orientation from the start is really essential to the rest of the outreach plan. And that is, you know, it's very time-consuming upfront, but absolutely worthwhile to make sure that that the outreach plan is well-informed by those of you who know the community best are in, you know, positions of leadership and kind of help influence their trajectory from the start.
Thank you. And one. My name's Christine Hayes, and I'm a council member. And so if I'm understanding right, the, this is phase one, and you'll gather all of our feedback, and from that feedback, you'll create a design. And then in phase two, and the second part of the year, you'll give us a proposed design to go forward on, to use to build the construction of the project. Is that correct?
That's right. This is acknowledging that the work between January and end of June, it would be essentially the first half of the work that needs to be done and, you know, set the project up in a good place to have all the benchmarks in this proposal met and for the refinement plan to be complete in, in the second phase.
And those are designs, and you do those designs, is that correct?
I help produce the designs. The, the design is at a set of inputs from a lot of different technical perspectives. You know, in this case, for example, you know, ODOT Rail will have specific design input, you know, and that will involve communication with the Sina Crowe. ODOT Region Two team, you know, having relationships with those folks, I think is really essential to this because they will provide most of the technical input for, for the proposal. And I, and, and what this, what I'm, what I'm trying to articulate here in the proposal is that the role of managing those inputs and process to make sure that, you know, one, the funds are released, two, there's good process that leads to a good planning, design, and, and three, that, that positions the city well for funding, should you choose to pursue it.
So how I'm seeing it in my mind, I'm a general contractor, I'm seeing you do different pages and, and like blueprints. So in my field, I have one for plumbing, one for electrical. So you're contacting each specialty and creating the page, who is doing the actual design work? Does that make sense? Am I, am I coming across clear?
I, I think so. I think so, and I'm trying to answer that. I think that's a good analogy that you're drawing. And so, yeah, in that sense, my work is largely that of a producer or, or a general contractor in terms of the technical inputs, the engineering. On the outreach side, that is, that would be the piece or half that I and my, my firm would lead on this and get, you know, gather those inputs, manage the process, compile, you know, compile the findings and make sure we have the feedback channel that goes into those technical inputs. In terms of that roster of folks, the, the plumber, the electrician, the masonry, that is, that is what I'm alluding to in the first step in project management of convening a team of, of core project, a core project team. The way we ran this for the, the development of the refinement proposal was an effective process. And we had, you know, a core team of, I think, probably five to seven folks, a, a couple or few people from ODOT Region Two being central to it, as well as the city. And then working through the, the inputs that are needed, basically those blueprints, as you mentioned, seeing who else we needed to reach out to, whether they needed to be a core member on that team or there's a more discrete piece of technical input that we can get from them. So that, an example might be engaging DSL on a certain piece.
So when do we get to the, the actual design work? When do we, is that like month nine? Or is there a preliminary design proposal at, at month six?
I think, I think that we would, so some of the, some of the timing will be dependent on the availability of the project team. So again, I think that's some of the urgency here. I, I, I see it as have, we will have the, the template for, for that design or refinement deliverable, and we will be filling that in as we go. So it's not that we wouldn't have elements of the final deliverable until, say, month six or nine. But, but I, but I certainly think it's reasonable to anticipate that it would take into Q3, calendar year Q3, for, for that process to be complete.
John Paul, I have a, a follow-up with what Councilor Hayes just asked. It's my understanding, and I'm not completely sure about this, but it's my understanding that ODOT is doing the engineering work on this. How, how do you fit in with the work that ODOT's doing?
Uh, it has to be, it's, it's very well, it's very dovetailed and integrated. This is going to help. I, this, this will help with the, the ODOT project management aspect as well. So again, having relationships with, with that team is central to it. I, I think what we're seeing right now, frankly, is, is a backlog. You know, a lot of funding has come in through, through our state agencies, through some of these federal programs, particularly ODOT. You know, ideally, the funds that have the award announcement that's been made would have been processed and available to the city some time ago. And so part of the role is just engaging ODOT, nudging, bird-dogging, helping with any, you know, capacity or logjam issues they might have there. There, there's a bit of a, kind of a, a fixer mover, shaker element to this, you know, of, of getting on people's agendas, helping elevate it as a priority. Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilor Martin, did you have any questions?
No, it's all quite familiar with what I've done in the past working in Portland.
No, I think the two ladies have voiced what concerns I had very eloquently.
Great. This is Charles McNeely, I'm, I'm the new mayor of Rockaway Beach. I did have a couple of things I wanted to chat with you about around the area of risk management. Every project has a, a cost, a schedule, and a scope. I believe this is a fixed cost bid, so we don't have to worry about the cost going above the identified costs in the, in the proposal. Is that a true statement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Schedule in here on page six under dependencies, you, you list some things that could affect the schedule. I'd like to see something added into the proposal about managing risk in general, but specifically identifying current known, known risks and what you're going to do to mitigate the impact of those risks on either the, the schedule or the scope of the project, and then update as the project goes forward. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes, that, that makes sense, and I'd be happy to do that.
Terrific. And then I just want to pile on the comment about community engagement. We love community engagement in Rockaway Beach, so I was very pleased to, to read all of the references to that in your documents, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Right. John Paul, maybe you could talk a little bit about the, the timelines we're up against as far as funding for the construction phase. What are, what, what are you trying to get out ahead of and what kind of deadlines are, are we looking at?
Sure, thanks, thanks, Luke. We don't have a, we don't have the program dates for Community Pass 2024 yet. Community Pass is, is the fairly new program that is targeted specifically for projects like this. And it is somewhat similar to Safe Routes of School, to, to school, for those of you who are familiar with that program. So that's, that's actually worth mentioning, that this will help with the delivery of the Safe Routes of School that, that you all have invested in. The, 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 the Infrastructure and Jobs Act, I believe it was the, the federal funding source that, that filled the coffers for the, the Community Pass funding in 2022 and '24. So there's a, there is a dramatic increase in available funding that we tapped into for this refinement project in the past and that will be wound down after 2024. So while we don't have the program dates for when the application process will open and close for those funds, we do know generally that the program was funded at, I think, around $8 million prior, prior to the federal funding in, in 2021, that it has been, I think, up to, I'm going to say around $30 million for '22 and '24, and that it will go back down to those pre-levels, so probably around $6 million. All of that to say, especially given that Rockaway's been awarded this planning project through, with ODOT, the city would be very, very competitive amongst the most competitive, I think, construction projects in 2024. But that after '24, funding for this type of infrastructure will be more challenging, will be more competitive. So in broad strokes, Luke, to answer your question, you know, having this refinement, which is ODOT's, basically just ODOT's wording for, for planning and design, having this done in time to have an informed application for construction funding for that next robust cycle.
Yeah, and just very, so not having cost estimates was, was, was difficult the last time around. We need to fix that. Because with, with the, the funding from ODOT for these construction projects, once you break ground, any of the over, over budget, the city's responsible for. And so we couldn't obligate the city to be in construction just yet. So, yeah, John Paul's helped us get, get ODOT, push ODOT to get to, get to design. yeah, John Paul's help, we can get, get ODOT, push ODOT to get the, get the design work done. It's the first 30% get cost estimate put together so we can go after the, the construction funding before it runs out. That's, that's the goal.
I read something today, actually this morning, about what Paul was talking about. The ODOT and the funding that was available through this, through the federal government.
Luke, I have one more comment or question for John Paul, if I may. And again, Mary, you started it. I noticed in here on page four, you talk about a regularly updated project implementation, implementation plan and timeline. I'd like to see something more specific around monthly reports back to the, the city council and the city manager. Some which could come to the workshop where there might be some discussion needed about it. And, but every, every council meeting, I think it would be good to have a report back to the city council. So folks in Rockaway Beach can be aware of, of the progress we're making. So that would be another ask exclusively. Call that out in your proposal.
There are five months. He says there are benchmarks in five of the six months. So maybe even just five of the six for me would be okay. It looks like there are two in February and so.
Does that sound good to you, John Paul? It does. Yes. I, I didn't touch the comment, the second comment clearly, but, but yes, absolutely. Happy to present updates and I think that's, that is certainly good process.
Thank you for that.
I have one more question. The area that we're talking about, are we talking about, can you tell us the, the length of 101 that the design work is being done on? So it's from the high school to the friends camp or I'm not clear?
I believe it's Washington. Oh, go ahead, Luke.
Yeah. Washington. Yeah. Washington Street up to Nodda Beach.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
It's terrific. We can go by the school.
Yeah, that's, that's the goal. Sounds like everybody's had their, their input. John Paul, before you came on, the cost came up. Just be aware of that. If anywhere you can bring that down, that'd be helpful. That is, that was on everybody's mind, just an FYI.
Okay. Well, I'd, I'd appreciate, I thank you all for the opportunity to be at this work session. And it would be a real privilege to work on this project with you all. Luke, I would be happy to follow up as soon as possible and make sure I've captured these recommendations and requests in, in an updated proposal.
Great. They will, they will meet up tomorrow.
Okay. Sounds good. I look forward to it.
Thanks, John Paul. We appreciate you dialing in.
Thank you all. Take care.
Luke, did you want to talk about some of the agenda items?
Yeah, yeah, real, real quickly. For the most part, I just wanted to go over the the contingency transfer resolution 23978. It'll be upcoming at the regular second. Now, I wanted to cover this at our last workshop, but the settlement hadn't been completed at that point. So it wasn't public record. Hard to talk about it. But just, just in general, giving an idea of what, what we're up to and so you make an informed decision later on tonight. Get my notes out here. So basically, so we did have a settlement on the Griffon Oak property investments. City's share of the settlement cost was $75,000. And with that, the perp land, the state case, the federal suit, everything related to that is basically over. We're, we're walking, we're walking away. In addition to $75,000 worth of settlement, we have the appeals cost for two, three years of appeals for the state, the state case. And that's, that's closed out now as part of the settlement. So of the, the $82,000 in appeal costs, our insurance company's gonna pick up half of that. So we're on the hook for $41,000 legal fees for appeals costs. So basically 75 and 41, we're looking at 116,000 total. And, and we, we're done with this case. We've been going for a long time.
I do have a question. You say we're done. Now what happens if this is all settled, the best is all settled and another big wave comes through and makes a mess out of their house? So they're gonna come out directly?
No. And I, I don't want to say more than that. I, I really want to steer clear going into any kind of legal scenarios and, and, and what would happen. In your package, it goes through the settlement pretty, pretty clearly. And if you have any specific questions, I'll, I'll answer it in an email for all of you. It probably will be our turn to answer that. But the short of it is, we're done. That's, that's basically the good news. So then the idea of, well, we need to pay for it now. Luckily, state budget law allows us to budget for the what-ifs and the unknowns. And the timeframe for this is kind of pushed up faster than, than, than we thought because of the settlement. We're gonna appeal the federal case. The settlement, it all, it all went away mid-year, fiscal year. So but we do budget for contingencies and budget law doesn't allow you to expand out of the contingency category. Those funds need to be moved up in the budget to whatever appropriate category of expenditure they need to be in. In our case, it's the administration portion of the general fund. That's where these would come from. So that's basically what this resolution does. It altered, it changes the budget, renes a budget to move these funds from the contingency category to the admin general fund. In which case, we can extend the funds. Fairly, fairly simple. I can answer your questions. But that's the general idea of what, what, what we're up to here.
So I remember in the budget meeting, we talked about, this is like our savings account for legal fees in case something should happen, right? And so we had that, did we have that in a budgeted account? And then?
I, I believe what you're referring to was money set aside to pay debt on a much larger amount. That would be at the federal case.
Okay.
Gone. Not gone at all for the city. That's what that was. So that, that money set aside for debt service.
And this is different, this one testing this. Okay. So this is contingency money?
Yeah.
You're telling me. Okay. And that was just in the admin category? Is that correct?
It's all gonna go up into the administrative category.
To be paid out there. And so bear with me, I'm sorry. So did we take contingencies from all of these different items?
The contingency is its own item.
Okay.
So every, every one of those.
Part of the budget.
Yeah, yeah. And so this is all, what you're seeing is, and that is the entirety of the general fund as far as the state is concerned. There's categories.
Okay. That's what I was, that's what, that was my question. I'm grateful to be done with that.
I am also. I came in on it since I was on the planning mission. And this has dragged on for years and years and years. I would back see it.
Well, any other questions on that? That was easy.
The students are working on it.
Took a while, but we got it done.
Luke, anything else?
I, I don't have anything else to add.
All right. Well, may I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn?
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No? Nay? All right. In the years of the, of the mayor, the, the ayes have it and we are adjourned at, it's at 5:41 on Wednesday, January 11th, 2023.